Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I would like to call the June 15th, 2020 Crest Hill City Council Meeting to order. If everyone would please rise for the Pledge Allegiance to the Flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag.
...................................................... Before we go any further, ladies and gentlemen, the city of Crest Hill and the entire Will County area lost a true friend on June 3rd. Our Will County Executive Larry Walsh passed away after a five-year battle with prostate It was truly a privilege and a blessing to be a friend of Larry Walsh. He accomplished many good things for the city of Crest Hill, and he will be sorely missed. We offer our most heartfelt sympathies and our most sincere condolences to his wife Irene and to the entire Walsh family. He truly was a great man, a very religious man. A man that worked on both the Republican side and the Democrat side for the good of Will County. So I would ask for a moment of silence out of respect for our Will County Executive Larry Walsh. Thank you. A roll call, please, Vicky.
Ray Solomon.
Here.
Glenn Conklin.
Present.
Scott Dyke.
Here.
John Verche.
Here.
Barbara Sclaire.
Here.
Claudia Gazal.
Here.
Tina Oberlin.
Present.
Marco Coladepietro.
Here.
Nate Albert.
Here.
Joe Kuba.
Here.
Okay, for the record, this is a virtual meeting. I am the Mayor Ray Solomon. I am at City Hall located at 1610 Plainfield Road. Along with me in the council chambers is our Assistant City Administrator Megan Filera. First order of business are the approval of the minutes of the virtual meeting which was held on June 1st, 2020, the Crest Hill City Council Meeting. Motion would be in order.
So moved.
Second.
We have motion by Alderwoman Sclaire. Who made the second?
I did, Marco.
Seconded by Alderman Coladepietro. Questions or comments in regards to the minutes of the virtual Crest Hill City Council Meeting held on June 1st, 2020? Roll call, please.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Verche.
Yes.
Joe Kuba.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yeah.
Marco Coladepietro.
Yes.
Barbara.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, the next order of business is the approval of the virtual Crest Hill City Council Work Session which was held on June 8th, 2020.
So moved.
Second.
We have motion by Alderwoman Sclaire, seconded by... Was it Alderman Albert?
Coladepietro.
Coladepietro. Questions or comments?
I know, well, can you?
Questions or comments in regards to the minutes of the virtual Crest Hill City Council Work Session held on June 8th, 2020? Roll call, please.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Verche.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kuba.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yeah.
Marco Coladepietro.
Yes.
Barbara Sclaire.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, next on the agenda is a public hearing regarding the committing local funds for the Rebuild Illinois Grant Application. I would ask for a motion.
So moved, just presented.
Second.
Second.
Motion by Alderwoman Oberlin, seconded by Alderwoman Gazal, for a public hearing regarding committing local funds for the Rebuild Illinois Grant Application. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Marco Coladepietro.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kuba.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Verche.
Yes.
Barbara Sclaire.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yeah.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, for the record, we are in the first public hearing at 7:06 PM. And just some opening comments. As you know, the city is applying for grant money to complete a sewer lining, televising, and cleaning project mainly in the areas with older infrastructure throughout the city. The grants are awarded through a competitive process. Successful applicants will be determined based on a number of criteria, one of which is the city council's commitment to provide matching funds. At a previous work session, city council agreed to a resolution committing matching funds to rebuild Illinois Grant, dedicating $500,000 from the Sewer Capital Fund toward the cost of this project while seeking the other $500,000 in grant money from the state of Illinois. In accordance with the requirement by the Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity, that is the reason that we are having the public hearing in regards to this application. So at this time, I would ask the city clerk, has anyone responded either by emails, telephone, or text to speak for or against city council's decision to dedicate these funds to cleaning, lining, and televising sanitary sewers in the city of Crest Hill?
There have been no requests to the city clerk's office, Ray.
Okay. I would ask if anyone in the public would like to speak for or against council's decision to dedicate these funds to cleaning, lining, and televising sanitary sewers in the city of Crest Hill. I will ask a second time if anyone in the public would like to speak for or against council's decision to dedicate these funds to cleaning, lining, and televising sanitary sewers in the city of Crest Hill. And I would ask for a third call if anyone in the general public would like to speak for or against council's decision to dedicate these funds to cleaning, lining, and televising sanitary sewers in the city of Crest Hill. Let the record show that no one has approached the podium to speak for or against. With that, I would ask for a closure of the public hearing regarding committing local funds for the Rebuild Illinois Grant Application.
So moved.
Second.
We have motion by Alderwoman Oberlin, seconded by Alderwoman Gazal to exit the public hearing regarding the grant application at 7:09 PM. Roll call, please.
Marco Coladepietro.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Verche.
Yes.
Barbara Sclaire.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kuba.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yeah.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, we are exiting that public forum at 7:10 PM. There is a need for a second public hearing, and this would be a public hearing regarding appropriations for all corporate purposes for the fiscal year beginning May 1st, 2020 and ending April 30th, 2021 for the city of Crest Hill, Will County, Illinois. Motion and second would be in order for this public hearing.
So moved.
We have motion by Alderwoman Oberlin, seconded by Alderwoman Coladepietro, was it?
Yes.
Questions or comments in regards to the motion for going to a second public hearing? Roll call, please.
John Verche.
Yes.
Barbara Sclaire.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yeah.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kuba.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Marco Coladepietro.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, we are in the public hearing beginning at 7:11 PM. And again, I would like to make some opening comments in regards to the appropriations and budget highlights for 2020 and 2021. This is the most important document throughout the year for the city of Crest Hill. So I would ask for your patience as I go through some of these highlights before we ask if anyone would like to speak publicly in regards to it. First of all, for the record, the budget highlights, the budget and the appropriations were published in Jolly at Herald News on June 2nd, 2020. I certainly would like to go through the budget highlights, but first, I certainly want to thank city council for all of their input in regards to this process. Many, many thanks to our city administrator Heather McGuire, our finance director Ashley Motika, our city treasurer Glenn Conklin, and all of the department heads for their input into this process for the last three months that we have worked through this budget process. Now, because of the coronavirus, we condensed our process to two meetings. We had our first budget meeting here at City Hall on March 9th. We had our second budget work session virtually on May 11th, 2020. I am proud to announce that once again, we have a balanced budget. We've had a balanced budget with a surplus for the last 12 years in the city of Crest Hill. And everybody, all of city council, all of city staff, all of the employees, all of our residents should be very proud of this accomplishment over the last 12 years to have a budget surplus at the end of the year, a balanced budget with a surplus at the end of the year. We also went through the process of taking a look at our bond rating, and we did come up with a double A bond rating through Standard and Poor's. This is the third highest ranking according to S&amp;P, and it is also the highest bond rating in the city's 60-year-old history. So again, that is something that this city council should be very proud of. We do have six months of reserves in this budget that we are... will be adopting here in a few minutes. We passed the six-month reserve policy four years ago to have six months of reserves, and we have been honoring that for the past four years. This year's budget of 2020, 2021, in the general fund, we will have a surplus of $20...
Mayor, if you could, you just muted yourself.
I'll go back in the general fund. We have a surplus of $21,993. In the water and sewer fund, we will have a projected budget, or surplus, of $42,834. The residents, again, should be confident that we are being fiscally responsible with their money. Our finances in the city of Crest Hill are solid. I certainly want to give many kudos and credit to our city staff, our department heads, as this year's operational budget is only slightly higher than last year's, and that is due to inflation and the rising costs for municipal operations. Our state revenues, such as sales tax, income tax, et cetera, will probably be decreased a little bit this year because of the stay-at-home order that we have been under for almost three months now, and of course, the business closures for those same almost two and a half months. But we are not alone in having a decrease in these taxes. All municipalities will have the same problem, some worse than others. The positive news for the city of Crest Hill is that the first six weeks from March to the end of April was actually under last year's budget and of lost revenue, and the next eight weeks here will be under this year's budget. So it's kind of split in half between the two budget years. Another positive result that... of the coronavirus that we've all have been dealing with here for the last three months is that most of our major sales tax providers in Crest Hill have remained open, and those, naturally, are Menards, our grocery stores, Food for Less, and El Guero, and all of our gas stations did remain open during the crisis. So those sales tax dollars should not be affected. I want the residents to know that the city of Crest Hill has applied for federal stimulus money through the CARES Act, which is now in the hands of Will County. And I want the residents of the city of Crest Hill to know that the city of Crest Hill has also applied for many additional grants to help reimburse and offset some of our losses. With the uncertainty of the coronavirus and its effects in the future, we are hoping to continue to provide the same level of service that our residents have come to expect over many, many years. Some of the highlights in this year's budget in regards to the police department. We will be hiring two officers this budget year to replace two officers who have retired. And for the citizens of Crest Hill, in 2009, when I became mayor, we had 24 sworn officers. And now in 2020, with hiring of the two that have just left us, we will have 32 officers once again. That is eight additional officers over the last 12 years that have been hired, sworn police officers in the city of Crest Hill. And this represents the most sworn officers in the city's 60-year-old history also.
Mayor, your mic is muted.
I keep hitting. You know, I'm not Mr. Technology. Okay, the police department will also be purchasing two additional hybrid vehicles. We have purchased two last year also, and we have seen both fuel savings and maintenance savings with the new hybrid vehicles. We also have added a canine tracking animal by the name of Simo, and that was with a grant that we received from Will County State's Attorney's Office, Jim Glasgow. We will also, in this budget, continue to meet all of our police pension contributions and obligations and remain on track to be fully funded by 2038. We are currently funded in our police pension fund at 69.6%, and state law mandates that all municipalities must be at 90% by 2040. We, as a city, as projected, will be at 100% at 2038, and this city council and this city, the police department and our residents should be extremely proud of this accomplishment also. In regards to Public Works, some of the highlights. We are currently starting this week, actually, I believe tomorrow, is going to start four blocks of road reconstruction and water main replacement on the 16, 17, 18, and 1900 blocks of Kelly Avenue and some of the east-west arterial streets which attach to Kelly Avenue. This project will certainly help to alleviate several of the flooding issues in this area, and this road is also long overdue. It is going to come at a cost of $1.4 million. Also, will be Pioneer Road, which is, again, probably the worst street in the city of Crest Hill. Pioneer Road will be ground and resurfaced at approximately $444,000. I believe that project is slated to begin in July. Again, that will be a major improvement along with Kelly Avenue for the city of Crest Hill. We have, again, this year allocated money for sidewalk replacement throughout the city, and again, that will be for safety issues and for liability issues. City Public Works Department will also be purchasing a new end loader to be more efficient with their operations. This is also the sixth year of the Vehicle Replacement Program, which has shown us a decrease in both in parts, in labor, and in vehicle breakdowns. And all of the vehicles that we currently have have now been replaced over the six years. The vehicles purchased have decreased over the years, and we are now reaping the benefits of higher trade-in values from purchases of the new vehicles. This also means less staffing time and also less maintenance costs. As a city council, I believe we all feel it is very important to have all of our employees in well-maintained and well-running vehicles for their safety, especially during emergency situations. We also will continue the 50-50 tree replacement program, and we will continue the property tax rebate checks for the eighth straight year in a row next March as promised from the 2012 Sales Tax Referendum. So the forms for the property tax rebate check will be mailed out in September of 2020, and the due date in returning those forms will be December of 2020. And if you... if everything is in order, you will be receiving your property tax rebate check in March of 2021. In regards to economic development highlights, we have just currently hired an additional clerk in the Building Department to support the increased activity in that department with the two-time, two part-time employees in the Building Department. We were slowed down a little bit, about two months, because of the coronavirus with the new Public Works facility. We wanted to be completed by the end of May, but again, with everything being shut down, kind of put a little halt to the skids on the Public Works, but we are projecting that Public Works will be moved in and ready for operations by the end of July. Also, we started in March, we started the groundbreaking for new City Hall and the Police Department on the property, the 19 acres located behind the Menards property off of Weber Road, and we are looking for an opening of City Hall and Police Department in March of 2022. These, both of these, all three of these buildings, actually, are long overdue, and as our city continues to grow, these modern facilities will be a tremendous benefit for many years to come, something that all of the city of Crest Hill should be proud of for our residents and for our employees. Due to careful financial planning over these last five, six years, these facilities will be built with only a small increase in the utility tax to our residents and no increases in property taxes to any homeowner in the city of Crest Hill. And again, that is something that this city council and our residents should be very proud of. In regards to water and sewer highlights, we, as a city, will continue to be proactive and not reactive to budget engineering costs for state mandated requirements at both of our treatment plants, and we have also budgeted $500,000 for sanitary sewer lining throughout the old infrastructure, Fox Meadows, Rock Run Drive, Pioneer Road, Larkin and Theodore, and parts of Willow Fall, if we do get the additional $500,000 grant from the Build Illinois. So we can... if we get the grant, we can certainly complete more projects throughout the city. And all of these improvements will help alleviate the infiltration and the inflow of rainwater during heavy rainfalls, and this will also help alleviate flooding and less rainwater that we have to treat at our sewage treatment plants, thus saving the residents' money over time. We will continue in this budget to participate in a 50-50 overhead sewer program, offering up to a $4,000 rebate to residents to help them alleviate basement flooding during heavy rainfalls. And again, city council most recently has approved rebating a $50 credit, which will be either on your July or your September water bill for all single-family homes, condos, and apartments, four units and under. So there are a lot of things that the city should be very proud of that have been accomplished for this budget year coming up in 2020, 21. That is all that I have to say. With that, I will ask our city clerk if anyone has dropped in the Dropbox or supplied a text, an email, or a phone call wishing to speak for or against a public hearing regarding appropriations for all corporate purposes for the fiscal year beginning May 1st, 2020 and ending April 30th, 2021 for the city of Crest Hill, Will County, Illinois.
There's been no requests, Ray.
Okay. And to the general public, is there anyone that would like to speak for or against public hearing regarding appropriations for all corporate purposes for the fiscal year 2020 to 2021 for the city of Crest Hill? A second call, if anyone would like to speak for or against public hearing regarding appropriations for all corporate purposes for the fiscal year beginning May 1st, 2020 and ending April 30th, 2021 for the city of Crest Hill. Please step to the podium, state your name for the record, your address is optional. End third call, if anyone would like to speak for or against the public hearing regarding appropriations for all corporate purposes for the fiscal year beginning May 1st, 2020 and ending April 30th, 2021 for the city of Crest Hill, Will County, Illinois. Let the record show that no one... no one is in the building, and no one has approached the podium. With that, I would ask for a closure of the public hearing at 7:27 PM. Motion would be in order.
So moved, just presented.
We have motion by Alderwoman Oberlin, seconded by Alderwoman Coladepietro for a closure to the public hearing. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Verche.
Yes.
Barbara Sclaire.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yeah.
Joe Kuba.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Marco Coladepietro.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, we are back in regular city council session at 7:28 PM. Moving back to the agenda, to our city administrator Heather McGuire. Good evening, Heather.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I have several agenda items to present this evening, however, the first two are in regards to the budget. The mayor did just go over all of the high points of the budget, so with that, I will turn it over to our finance director Ashley Motika to go over the numbers and specifics of both the appropriations ordinance and the budget ordinance.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight, we are presenting the 2021 Fiscal Year Annual Appropriation, which includes the amount to be raised by taxes and the amount of $2,249,825, and the amount to be raised by other sources amounting to $43,776,666. This totals to our annual appropriation in the amount of $46,026,491. Today, we are seeking approval for this set appropriation. Is there any questions?
Motion would be in order.
So moved, just presented.
Second.
Motion by Alderwoman Oberlin, seconded by Alderwoman Gazal for an ordinance making appropriations for all corporate purposes for the fiscal year, May 1st, 2020, ending April 30th, 2021 for the city of Crest Hill. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Barbara Sclaire. Marco Coladepietro.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kuba.
Yes.
John Verche.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yeah.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Motion carries. Ordinance number is 1843.
Thank you. Tonight, we are also going to request approval for our annual budget. This includes revenue for the general fund in the amount of $10,324,331, expenses for our general fund amounting to $10,302,338, leaving a surplus in the general fund, as mentioned previously, of $21,993. It also includes our water and sewer revenue in the amount of $8,693,084, expenses for the Water and Sewer Fund in the amount of $8,693,084.
in the amount of $8,650,250, leaving a surplus of, in the water and sewer fund in the amount of $42,834. The total budget amount for the 2021 fiscal year is anticipated to be revenues of $27,758,565, along with expenses totaling the amount of $44,616,446,234.
Questions or comments? Motion would be in order.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Alderwoman Oberlin, seconded by Alderman Coladi Pietro for the approval of an ordinance adopting a citywide budget for the 2020, 2021 fiscal year for the city of Crest Hill. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
John Verche?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
Barbara Scoler?
Yes.
Claudia Gazal?
Yeah.
Joe Kubal?
Yes.
Marco Coladi Pietro?
Yes.
Tina Oberlin?
Yes.
Motion carries. Ordinance number is 1844.
Thank you. And I also, along with the mayor, want to express my appreciation to our Finance Director, Ashley Motica, for all the work she's done on this. Obviously, as we were part of the way through our budget planning process, we had to pivot a little bit with the changes in revenue to COVID and some additional changes that we made as a result of that. So all of the department heads have worked diligently to get everything finished. We worked remotely, had a lot of virtual meetings. It was want to thank Council for what it does as we continue through this and make all the adjustments that we had to make. So thank you very much to everybody. The next agenda item I have is for ratification of the AEP Energy Purchase Agreement. This was discussed at the June 8th work session. This is just for the city's streetlights. This is not the residential aggregation program. But per the discussion, we will be entering into a 36-month term. Our current rate is at 3.163 cents. That will be moving down to 2.469 cents. This is the lowest rate we have ever seen in our years of aggregation. So this, again, would just be for our streetlights, and I'm looking for approval on that this evening.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Alderwoman Scoler, seconded by Alderwoman Oberlin for a ratification of the AEP Energy Incorporated Energy Purchase Agreement. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Joe Kubal?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
John Verche?
Yes.
Claudia Gazal?
Yeah.
Marco Coladi Pietro?
Yes.
Tina Oberlin?
Yes.
Barbara Scoler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The next item I have for consideration is a resolution approving modification to the police pension funding policy for the city. This was discussed initially when we discussed the police pension at the March 9th work session. And this based on the changes to the police pension board, and that all being pooled now with the entire state. While we are unsure what exactly is going to occur with that board, and they are still setting it up, we wanted to reserve that $150,000 additional contribution we were making on top of the actuarial requirement. So we are still going to be dedicating those funds to the police pension, but we are going to hold them for this fiscal year until we determine with a little bit more specificity what's going on at the state level. So again, those are still being held specifically for the police pension fund. But until we know what's going on, we want to just keep those in a separate account.
So move, Mayor.
Second.
Second.
We have motion by Alderman Albert, seconded by Alderman Coladi Pietro for a resolution approving modification to police pension funding policy for the city of Crest Hill. Questions or comments in regards to the motion, second?
I think this is a wonderful idea. I'm a little nervous as to what's going to happen myself, so I think it's a very wise move on the part of the city.
Anybody else? Roll call, please.
Claudia Gazal?
Yes.
Barbara Scoler?
Yes.
John Verche?
Yes.
Joe Kubal?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
Marco Coladi Pietro?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Tina Oberlin?
Yes.
Motion carries. Resolution number is 1080.
Thank you. The next item I have is a resolution waiving the bid and authorizing execution of a proposal for flooring at the Public Works Building. This was also discussed at the June 8th work session. We did go out to bid on this for the public works flooring, but unfortunately, we did not come back with any bids. So we did seek out some quotes in line with what our estimates were, and we received the attached to the resolution quote for $49,260.87 for flooring first. So I'm requesting approval to waive that bid and sign a proposal with them for the Public Works Building flooring.
So move, is presented.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Alderwoman Oberlin was the second Alderman Dyke?
Yes.
Seconded by Alderman Dyke for a resolution waiving bid and authorization execution of proposal for flooring at the Public Works Building. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
John Verche?
Yes.
Barbara Scoler?
Yes.
Claudia Gazal?
Yeah.
Marco Coladi Pietro?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Joe Kubal?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
Tina Oberlin?
Yes.
Here is. Resolution number is 1081.
Thank you. The next item I have before you is an ordinance prohibiting unlawful discrimination in housing and/or real property because of race, color, religion, creed, national origin, ancestry, sex, or disability in the city of Crest Hill. As we are beginning to apply for some of these grants, we are doing some cleanup items, making sure we have those requisite policies in place. So this is a product of one of those grants, just ensuring we have one of those policies in place. So I am seeking approval on that this evening.
So move, as presented.
Second.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Albert, seconded by Alderman Coladi Pietro for an ordinance prohibiting and making unlawful discrimination in housing and/or real property because of race, color, religion, creed, national origin, ancestry, sex, or disability in the city of Crest Hill, Illinois. Questions or comments in regards to the motion? Roll call, please.
Claudia Gazal?
Yeah.
Tina Oberlin?
Yes.
Joe Kubal?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
John Verche?
Yes.
Barbara Scoler?
Yes.
Marco Coladi Pietro?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Motion carries. Ordinance number is 1845.
Thank you. That was the final agenda item I have for consideration this evening. The informational report is on file. One item of note is that we will be having MC Squared send out some of the renewal notices. So residents may be receiving one if they are currently with MC Squared to let them know we are renewing our electrical aggregation program. If you are currently with ComEd, you may not be receiving one. But just as a reminder, you can opt out at any time if you do not want to be part of that program. There are numbers that you can call if you want to get more specifics on the program. You can call 888-232-6351. Or if you contact the city, we can clarify and direct you to the appropriate person to answer additional questions. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any other questions this evening.
Heather, just to clarify, just to clarify, the MC Squared, the letters that go out, it's based off of usage, right? Is that how they determine who's on the plan?
That's correct. So as a short, as quick of an explanation as I can give, MC Squared is basically evaluating every and those customers that they determine meet their criteria will be pulled over to MC Squared. Those that don't will remain with ComEd. But regardless of whether you're with MC Squared or ComEd, the rate will be identical. Everybody will be receiving that lowest available rate.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions of city administrator?
Well, Heather, it's good to see Officer Simo is already earning his keep.
Absolutely. And I'll let Ed comment more on that once we get to his section of the report. But it's a really great addition to the force and to
Okay, thank you, Heather. Moving on to Public Works Department, since all three of these agenda items are water-related, I am going to turn it right over to Mark Seifert. Mark?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The first item on the agenda would be a proposal from Strand and Associates for the Emergency Response Plan and the Risk and Resiliency Assessment. It talked about it at the last work session. Public Works Department is seeking council approval to execute a contract with Strand for not to exceed an amount of $43,200 to fulfill this requirement of the U.S. EPA.
Motion would be in order?
So move, yes, presented.
A second.
Motion by Alderwoman Oberlin, seconded by Alderman Albert for Strand and Associates not to exceed the amount of $43,200. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Barbara Scoler?
Yes.
John Verche?
Yes, yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
Claudia Gazal?
Yeah.
Joe Kubal?
Yes.
Marco Coladi Pietro?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Tina Oberlin?
Yes.
Motion carries.
The next item on the agenda is the resolution committing local funds for the Rebuild Illinois Grant Application. This was the public hearing we just had a little bit ago. This would commit $500,000 of the city's money that we have budgeted in the Water and Sewer Capital budget towards this project in hopes that the state of Illinois would commit $500, $500 in dollars back to us. So this is Public Works Department asking for council to pass the accompanying resolution.
So move.
So move.
I heard a motion by Alderwoman Gazal was the second Alderman Coladi Pietro?
Yes.
Okay, for a resolution committing local funds for Rebuild Illinois Grant Application as described in the public hearing. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Joe Kubal?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
John Verche?
Yes.
Barbara Scoler?
Yes.
Tina Oberlin?
Yes.
Marco Coladi Pietro?
Yes.
Claudia Gazal?
Yeah.
Motion carries. Resolution number 1082.
The final agenda item I have tonight is a change order with Austin Tyler for the project on Kelly Avenue. As talked about in the last work session, we would like to abandon the storm sewer line that currently goes under the properties of 1716 and 1718 Kelly, reroute them down this easement through the alleyway and connect them to Rayner and Ludwig. Public Works Department is asking for a change order of $56,474.83 to reroute and upsize the storm lines on Kelly Avenue.
So move. Second. So move.
Motion by Alderman Dyke, who made the second?
Nate.
Alderman Albert. This is for the rerouting of the storm sewer in the 1700 block of Kelly, awarded to Austin Tyler in the amount of $56,474.83. This was discussed at the last work session. And also, this would be a major improvement. And as long as we're doing the work on Kelly Avenue, this would be a cost savings to the city to get this done right now. Questions or comments in regards to the motion, the second? Roll call, please.
Joe Kubal?
Yes.
Marco Coladi Pietro?
Yes.
Tina Oberlin?
Yes.
Claudia Gazal?
Yeah.
Barbara Scoler?
Yes.
John Verche?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. That's all I have for tonight.
Okay, any questions of Mark Seifert, our Director of Water and Wastewater, or Tom Meggitts, our Director of Public Works?
Thank you, Mark, for all your work.
And Mayor, if I just may, real quick, I know that Clark Mosquito is coming out to spray this evening, so I just wanted to make sure that the residents were aware of that as well. Smart message did go out, and it was posted on our Facebook. So they will be out if everyone sees the trucks, just to be aware of it.
Right, okay, thank you. Anybody else? Okay, thanks, Mark. Moving on, Community Development Department, our Economic Development Director, Scott McMaster. Good evening, Scott.
Evening, Mayor and Council. I have no agenda items this evening, but I'll address any questions or concerns.
Questions?
Yeah. Scott, can I ask you a question? On a flyer got from Heather. You and Heather went out there, took pictures on Amazon. They had an address on the building. How come you only got them? Nobody mentioned Amazon. I mentioned the industrial park. And you only got a picture of this. I went through there yesterday. There's five buildings up there with no addresses on. What are we going to do? Forget about them now, because Amazon got theirs?
And Alderman Verche, I apologize if that was what you said. I recalled that you had specifically referenced Amazon. So that's what we looked at and included. But we did look at the rest of the buildings. The ordinance requires that the address be visible from the street upon which they sit. Both Dayton Freight and Old Dominion, obviously, are further back. You wouldn't be able to see their address from Division Street anyway, but they do have address markers actually on Division Street. We didn't specifically look at Rich Products, TLC Ingredients, or Cloverleaf. But my understanding was that you were specifically referencing Amazon. So I'm happy to go and take a look at that if you want. at that if you want, but I know that Old Dominion and Dayton Freight do comply, we did verify their addresses.
I don't remember saying strictly Amazon, maybe I was wrong, but I don't remember saying Amazon. I said the industrial area.
I may have misheard, that was just my recollection, which is why that we looked at that building specifically, but I'm happy to look at the other ones.
Anybody else, questions?
Hey, Scott, I saw Enterprise Rent-A-Car took their signs down at Route 30 in Caton Farm. Do you know if they're totally gone or are they going to come back?
I know there was rumors about them leaving. I know that the Enterprise has been closing some of their shops. I don't know if one of ours has been, our location has been closed or not, but I'll look into it.
Okay, thanks, Scott. Moving on, our Police Department, our Police Chief, Ed Clark. Good evening, Ed.
Evening, Mayor and Council. I don't have anything on the agenda this evening for council approval. My report is in your packet. Just wanted to make comment that over the last few weeks during a lot of tumultuous time, I'm very proud of the Police Department's conduct and professionalism, and just their conduct throughout this whole process. That's from command staff, from street supervisors, and from the officers themselves. Very proud, they did a fantastic job, and they continue doing good work. Secondly, I'd like to, Simo is a rock star. He's doing a fantastic job. He's been on a few search warrants, he's actually located a lot of drugs, a large amount of cash and drugs in one particular instance through a homicide investigation. He's doing a fantastic job, and Officer McHale's doing a really nice job with him. They bonded very well, they're doing a lot of good things in training, they're keeping up their training, and, you know, we were really, really fortunate to get him, so he's just going to keep doing good things for us. It's going to be good on the PR end as well. Any questions?
Any questions or comments of the police chief?
Well, Chief, I want to commend all you guys as well, because during all of this, you did outstanding work. I'm happy to see Simo's doing so well, but I just want to comment on the video that somebody sent me about one of the nights during some of the protests, and what a remarkable little job that two of our officers did that night, our deputy chief and a sergeant who addressed the crowd. I just thought they handled everything really well, they were very calm, and I was very impressed, so thank you for that.
I will pass that along, thank you.
I would like to make a comment as well, Chief. I want to thank the Police Department for the last two weekends. They have been supervising the peaceful protest from Arbor Glen, our subdivision here in Ward Two. I was out there with them. It was just seeing different cultures and seeing the police stand there with us, it was just like, you can see the bond, and one of them apologized to the police front of me, that even though he was holding a sign saying, "Not all cops are bad," he brought them, he goes pray. I mean, not every police does that, so please thank them for us. I know they're going to do another one. We are praying for them, because you know what, you all guys in a very bad situation right now. But I do want to thank also Arbor Glen for doing a very peaceful protest. So let's keep it going. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Ed.
Thank you, Mayor.
Moving on to the Mayor's Report, I do not have any agenda items this morning, just one comment in regards to the census 2020. You know, if you have not filled out the census, please take five minutes, and you can either do it online, you could do it on the telephone, or you can mail in what you have, the application that was sent in the mail. If not, you will be having a census taker coming to your door probably in August, so please cooperate. I cannot stress how important it is to the city of Crest Hill that you do fill out the census form. With that, if anyone would have any questions of the mayor, I'll certainly try to answer them.
I have a question for you, Mayor. Are we planning on bringing a computer or somewhere outside or a laptop that they can help present, they don't have access to computer? The plan, that was the plan for us to do back before everything happened. Is there any way we can provide something during the day from certain time to certain time?
And I assume you're talking about the census, correct?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I know that they worked with the White Oak Library, the one on Weber Road, the Crest Hill branch, I know that was a spot that was where there are accessibility to computers. Now, I don't know if the computers are being in operational use. I know that the library was just reopening this week, I believe, but I thought that I read on one of the emails that Scott Pointon had sent out that the computers were not going to be available still because of the coronavirus, so I am not sure if there will be one available there, but I'm sure with the virus, we have to be a little bit more safety precautions need to be used with all of this, but I'm sure that we could probably reach out to Vernice Alvarez down at the Spanish Community Center tomorrow, and we could see if they would be able to supply that at the library. Megan Flara is already nodding her head that she's on it.
She said she will be willing to help in any way, even help the resident to fill their application, so you might want to reach to her as well.
And who was that?
Vernice Alvarez?
Yes, we'll be calling her to...
Megan, you need to mute your mic.
I'm sorry?
That was me, I just asked Megan to mute her mic, they were getting a little feedback between her and the mayor.
Yeah, we will, Megan will reach out to Vernice tomorrow morning, and we'll see what we can do at the library. With City Hall still being closed here, it puts us kind of in an awkward position here, so, but we'll reach out to Vernice tomorrow morning. Anybody else?
Yeah, Ray, got to ask you a question.
Sure.
Who's in charge of erasing graffiti on buildings and signs and all that?
That would be through our Building Department, and are you talking to one on Ludwig between Dearborn and Nicholson?
Yes, I am.
All right, yeah, and we'll turn it over to Building Department tomorrow morning.
It's done already. It took 10, 10 days to get that erased in that building. And I got so tired of it looking yesterday, I had three cans of white paint myself, and my, two of my kids went out there, painted that darn thing ourselves white. Today they came over there and they washed it all down. 10 days, terrible. You got to start doing something with Ward One, Ray, you're letting things go in Ward One, and I'm not happy with you. I know the games you're playing, so let's get out of your games and start doing a job, will you? You're making Scott and I look terrible over here. I'm getting a little disgusted with that. I had, I had Rayner on Oakland Avenue by the railroad tracks, this is the third year now, I asked him to get a contract to cut that grass along the east side of Oakland Avenue before the railroad track, this is the third year, I'm still waiting for the grass to get cut. What's the holdup, Ray? People in Ward One are very unhappy, you're giving Scott and me a dirty name, so I'm getting a little sick and tired of your favoritism.
Well, there is a process that we have to go through with Building Department, we have to notify the owner, and it takes time, it's just not a quick turnaround. If you recall, the one that was down on Broadway Street too, there is a process, I mean legally, we need to follow a process, John. The people may not be happy with it, you may not be happy with it, but legally, we need to follow the process that we have put in place. So until that changes, we have to give the opportunity for the owner of the property to fix the problem, and if they don't, after a certain amount of time, then we can go down there and we can take care of it and put a lien on the property. But for as far as I know, that's the way the system works right now. Scott McMaster, unless you have anything else to add in regards to the graffiti?
I don't, I know that we've caught that a few times, and they're pretty diligent about grass cuttings, obviously, some council members have let us know some areas where there's a need, but, and we rely on that, we rely on eyes and, you know, council members and the public to let us know we're not catching that, so, but our guys are out there trying to do their best, and for the most part, I think they're doing pretty well.
Anybody else, questions?
I think somebody dropped the ball in this here one right over here, because one of my kids were talking, the owner of the building, he said a graffiti was there, the police officer were there, she let him talk on her telephone, they said that the police officer told the owner of the building, he would get a call back, he waited 10 days for a phone call, never received a phone call. I got tired of it, so I painted a doggone thing yesterday. Today they come and did the job. 10 days, too long.
Anybody else, questions?
Yes, Ray, as far as graffiti, this is kind of a technical one, but I did get a call today that the U.S. Postal Service mailbox in Hillcrest was tagged, so I'm sure because it's a postal federal, that they need to be made aware of that, I don't know, but it was tagged with graffiti.
Okay. Scott, you can take care of that tomorrow with Kirk or John or Terry, get the letter out to the Postal Service. I'm sure they're aware of it from one of the carriers probably being there, he may have already turned it in also.
I just don't want it to go unsaid. I got a call.
Okay, all right, anybody else? Okay, moving on to the City Clerk, our City Clerk, Vicki Hackney. Good evening, Vick.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I have no items on the agenda this evening. Just to be public, I know hopefully as we move into Phase Four, we have been getting inquiries regarding garage sales. Once we do reach that, hopefully within the next week and a half or so, and City Hall opens up, we can go ahead and address those. I know there's been concerns regarding that, but the police, I mean to man that there's not a bunch of individuals at a sale is very difficult, I think, during this time, so we have held off, we have discussed this with Heather McGuire, City Administrator. So hopefully after Phase Four, if anyone has any questions, I know we're getting calls, but feel free to give us a call back after that, we can get those going for you as soon as possible. That's all I have this evening.
Any questions of City Clerk?
Yeah, Vicki, can I ask you a question? This is John again.
Sure.
The letters that went out to the business people, I think they should have sent a letter out only to the liquor department, but it appeared I had six phone calls about people unhappy, say my business license is $50, and now it's $1,200. I said, no, that's for liquor only. I said, you pay your ordinary $50, that should not have been sent to everyone, and people want to know, how come there was no application in the envelope when they come out with the letters also? I don't know who was mailing them out, your department or whoever mailed those letters out.
We don't handle liquor, John, but as far as, that's a general ordinance, so as far as the business license, what it is for residential, but there was no sense of us sending applications out now because they're in the January, so we already have drafted, excuse me, the letter that will go out in December notifying them, attaching the application to foresee any businesses that are closed open that we'll be dealing with, but we wanted to give them ahead of time because individuals starting to send their payments in, that would do the end of June, so it's a matter of us returning their checks, so we're trying to save a lot of businesses that.
And if I may add on to that, John, I think what people were doing is they were reading a section that we had to change the date in that applied only to the motel hotel license. It is a different section of the ordinance, but obviously that was one thing that also needed to be included and changed, and I think that was the only section that referenced the dollar amount, so when people jumped to that section, they assumed the business license went up. We did post in as many places as we could that the business license did not increase in fee, it is still $50, but obviously if people didn't understand exactly the different sections of the ordinance, they just made that assumption, but we did try to clarify that where we could as well.
Yeah, see, there was no other thing in the letter, only $1,200 due, and six people, they were real unhappy when they talked to you, so...
We did get calls to our office, and we did explain to them, I think we only had a couple of calls, John, but tell them they're free to call our office and we can explain it to them, we'd be more than happy.
I did explain to them, Vic, so they're happy, I told them liquor license, don't worry.
Okay, thank you so much, appreciate your help.
And if I could just...
Good evening, Ray.
Okay, if I could just piggyback on that, Vicki, the liquor, the liquor license renewals are sent out through the mayor's office as the liquor commissioner. I will tell you that the ones that were sent out the first week in June by Maribel only went to six liquor license holders out of 36. They have the opportunity to pay upfront, January 1st, the full amount, or they can make two semi-annual payments, one in June and one in December. There are only six out of 36 liquor license holders that chosen to make the two payments. Those six were sent out the first week of June to the six liquor license holders in the city of Crest Hill in the amount of $625. Most of them have already repaid, we did not put a penalty on it if they were late, just to help them try and move along here after being closed for three months.
Okay, thanks, Ray, I just wanted to clarify with John that we're not sending out the liquor renewal licenses, but thank you.
This, excuse me, but this letter's had $1,200 due, so, you know, that's a liquor license letter. I'll have to get one of those copies and show you.
It was changed for the motel hotel tax or the motel hotel license, it's not about the liquor license, it was just one of these sections that needed to be discussed and we changed the dates.
Okay.
Okay, thanks, Vick.
Thanks, Ray.
Moving on, our Treasurer, Glenn Cocklin. Good evening, Glenn.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I have, I'd like to report our regular overtime payroll for the period of May 25th, 2020 through June 7th of 2020, in the amount of $224,747.26. The only item I have is I seek your approval on our list of bills, which in that same time period amounts to $1,099,754.58.
No move just presented.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All right, we have motion by Alderwoman Overland, seconded, was it Alderman Albert?
Yes.
Seconded by Alderman Albert for the list of bills, questions or comments? Roll call, please, Vick.
Barbara Scoler?
Yes.
John Verche?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
Joe Kubal?
Yes.
Marco Coladi-Patro?
Yep.
Claudia Gazal?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Tina Oberlin?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you all, any questions for me?
Questions of City Treasurer?
Thank you, goodnight.
Thanks, Glenn. Moving on to unfinished business, we have nothing on the, no agenda items, anybody under unfinished business? New business, we have no agenda items under new business, anybody? Committee liaison reports, anyone? City Council comments, positive city council comments, anything you'd like to share with your constituents? Let's begin with Ward Two tonight, Alderwoman Gazal.
Oh, put me on the spot. I just want to wish all the residents happy, independent days, since we won't have a meeting, let's remember, no fireworks, leave the fireworks to the professional, be cautious of all the pets and older people, so that's my, my comment. Thank you, Mayor.
Alderwoman Scoler?
Nothing this evening.
Ward One, Alderman Verche?
Nothing.
Alderman Dyke?
Yeah, just want to wish all the residents and their family a happy and safe Fourth of July, and if any residents of Ward One have any questions, concerns, or anything, feel free to give me a call, 815-922-3017. Thank you.
Ward Three, Alderwoman Overland?
Well, I want to wish all the fathers a very happy Father's Day next week. Mine has been, has been in heaven for 20 years this year, so God rest him, and happy Fourth of July to everyone, and please be safe.
Alderman Coladi-Patro?
I'd like to wish all the fathers a happy Father's Day as well, and thank you to the chief and the police officers for doing a great job this past few weeks, appreciate it, and happy Fourth of July to everybody.
Ward Four, Alderman Albert?
Yeah, I also want to thank the Police Department for their hard work during the last few weeks, along with Public Works, because they had to do some stuff to prepare for the peaceful protest as well, and also just as a more personal note, it was nice to get back to a little bit of normalcy yesterday. The Crest Hill Catholic Churches have reopened, St. Anne's and St. Ambrose, so if anybody is interested in attending one of the masses, they do just ask for reservations by calling the rectory office at 815-722-3222, and Father can give you the stipulations that need to be in place to attend the masses. Thank you, Mayor.
And Alderman Kubal?
Nothing else to add, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Public comment, if anyone, let me ask, let me ask the City Clerk first, Vicki, has anybody dropped anything in the Dropbox, sent an email, a text, or a telephone call for public comment this evening?
No, there's been no request via email or the white Dropbox, Mayor.
Okay, thank you, and if anyone would like to make public comment, please step to the podium, state your name for the record, your address is optional, let the record show that no one has approached the podium, or have we received any electronic messages? With that, to our City Administrator, Heather, is there a need for an executive session this evening?
No, there is not, Mayor.
Motion to adjourn, Mayor.
Second.
We have motion by Alderman Dyke, seconded by Alderman Verche for an adjournment, questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Barbara Scoler?
Yes.
Claudia Gazal?
Yes.
Tina Oberlin?
Yes.
Marco Coladi-Patro?
Yep.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Joe Kubal?
Yes.
John Verche?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
Okay, carries.
Okay, meeting is adjourned at 8:08 PM. I thank you and good evening.
Good evening.